Are we live? We go? Okay. Welcome, everyone. This is the City of Fairway, Kansas. It is our monthly city council meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2023, 6:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Nathan, do you have any announcements? After we stand for the pledge of allegiance this evening, I would ask that you remain standing for a few moments and remember Officer Oswald. And I'll let you know when we're ready to be seated. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to read a proclamation in memory of Officer Oswald. Whereas Fairway's heroic police officers put their lives on the line every day to protect the citizens of Fairway and maintain law and order in Fairway and surrounding communities. And whereas the community of Fairway, Kansas, has been struck by a profound sense of loss and sadness with the passing of one of its dedicated and courageous police officers, Jonah Oswald. And whereas Officer Oswald, serving as a pillar of strength, commitment, and selfishness, demonstrating an unwavering dedication to protecting and serving the residents of Fairway and all of Northeast Johnson County. Whereas Officer Oswald displayed exceptional bravery and professionalism in the face of danger, upholding the highest standards of law enforcement, and acting as a true role model for all members of the community. And whereas Officer Oswald not only patrolled our streets, but also actively engaged with the community members, fostering relationships built on trust, respect, and empathy, which are the foundation of a safe and harmonious society. Whereas Officer Oswald demonstrated a deep and abiding commitment to justice, fairness, and equality, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, were treated with the dignity and respect they deserved. And whereas Officer Oswald's legacy will forever be etched in the hearts of Fairway residents, as well as in the annals of our community's history, serving as a reminder of the sacrifices made by those who protect and serve. And whereas Fairway's annual recognition of National Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day shall have a new and personal meaning to the community. And whereas the loss of Officer Oswald is felt not only by the law enforcement community, but also by the entire community of Fairway. Now therefore, I, Melanie Heppely, Mayor of the City of Fairway, on behalf of the Fairway community, do hereby proclaim our deep gratitude for the service and sacrifice of Officer Oswald, whose life exemplified the values that make Fairway a close-knit and caring community. Our unwavering support for Officer Oswald's family, friends, colleagues, and all those affected by this loss, as we stand together in this time of grief and remembrance. Our commitment to perpetuate the legacy of Officer Oswald by continuing to work towards creating a community characterized by unity, compassion, and understanding. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of Fairway to be affixed this 21st day of August in the year 2023. All right, let's continue with the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the monthly reports of the standing committees. Consolidated Fire District Number Two Chief Chick is not here this evening. We will let his report stand as submitted. Are there any questions? Okay. Admin and Finance, Nathan?
Mayor, the Administration and Finance Committee did not meet in July, so I will let the reports from both stand and have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Nathan? Okay. Police, there is no report. Public Works, Bill?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll let my report stand as submitted. I would like to highlight that we, in a little over a three-week time period, did get two rounds made through the city after two storms, collecting well over 2,000 cubic yards of debris at Curbside with a lot of help from Casey Arbors coming through, pulling off of other jobs to get streets open in our city, and also doing the bulk of that pickup with their grabber trucks. We're going to have a proclamation for that a little later, and I would also like to highlight, they're planning on finishing or starting the rest of our capital improvement projects on Wednesday, weather permitting, which now includes heat as well as rain. So looking forward to getting the rest of those started and done. Subject, any of your questions?
Questions for Bill? David?
Yeah, I hear you. The hangar work is starting Wednesday, or is it done?
The hangar work is 99% done.
Okay. A neighbor asked me if it was done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bill. Parks and Rec, Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight that we do have a new employee, Renee Reese. She will be taking Vicki's position, and Vicki will transition to the admin side. So Renee's been out, been with us for just around a month or so, and she's been at the pool learning and brings a great deal of knowledge with her. And I'm going to bring her and Jackson actually to a meeting in the future, because Jackson never came because we were online back when we hired him. So, and I also would like to mention, along with the storm damage, that the Shawnee and Mission, if you guys get questions about any of the storm damage at the Mission, the state is taking, there's so much damage out there that they're taking it to bid, through the bid process, and that should be, a contractor should be selected here, I would hope, in the next couple of weeks, and then those issues will be remedied. We do have a lot of down limbs and about five trees that need to be taken out.
Any questions for Bryce? Jenna?
Yeah, Bryce, it looks like our numbers are awesome in terms of all the budgeting needed, so thank you for that. I had a question about the Super Pass, and if I noticed that Roland Park was only open four days, how does that factor into our overall analysis and budgeting for Super Pass? And do we need to be kind of aggressive in saying, you know, we're open all these days and you're not?
Yeah, so the Super Pass agreement changed this year for the first time since I've been here, based on the amount of days that Roland Park was open for the 2022 season. So it used to be that there was pooled, there's a section of, they would, we have a pooled 50% of the money that comes in, you keep, and then the other pooled money gets divided between all the visits. Well, if you don't meet a certain threshold now in 2023, if you're not open a certain amount, then you don't get to dip your hand into that pooled money. We will be looking into the future, though, for more, because right now, all the money that they would receive, there could be, the Fairway should probably be owed a little bit more of that portion, based on the visits we're getting from specifically Roland Park, but everybody else in the Super Pass.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Dan?
I didn't realize these summer camp numbers were so high until I read your report. Are all these camps taking place, like, inside the pool?
Yeah. So we have the pool house that we've used to use for all the setup. We've gotten bigger, so we're using the outdoor on the actual deck. We have a tent by this snack bar where the kids set up now. When Nathan was Park and Rec Director, they used to run camps out of the shelters, but those have become so popular now, too, that we're kind of almost pushed off our own shelters a little bit. So we've kind of made room inside the pool deck for what we can do now, and we've maxed it out. If we were to have more space, then we could definitely grow the program, I believe, but the numbers were, they were crazy this year.
Do you think that's the efforts of marketing, or?
Nope.
A lack of, a lack of camps around the area?
I think there's more people returning to the workplace, to their offices, I think, and maybe they're not able to watch their kids or something to that effect. I know camps around us, you know, in Mission are full as well, and there are people that were coming to us because of Mission. We don't run a full-day camp, so we only run a five-hour camp, so it's kind of a unique thing where you drop your kid off at 10 and get picked up by 3:00, so not every parent's work-life can balance with that. So we've just have never seen the amount of kids coming our way, and I think it's been largely word of mouth, because we did the same marketing that we always have, and I don't think there was anything outside of what we normally do.
I think just to piggyback on that, Dan, I think to give Parks and Rec credit where credit is due, it's the quality of program they're offering, and it is the, word of mouth is obviously the best form of advertising, and I think that's what we're seeing here. When registration opened, you saw families coming in and registering their kid for multiple camps throughout the course of the summer. So there is definitely a high degree of confidence in the level of service that they're delivering there with those programs. So I think it also goes to the, sort of the reputation they're building for themselves.
Yeah. I think that's great. I mean, I'd assume we do a lot of thinking over the winter of how to capture a lot of those extra people next summer, right?
Yeah, I mean, with some, you know, the waiting list, I think, was averaged around 20, so we could almost closely, almost double our size if we wanted to, if we had the space to do it. But I think the other thing is the ratio of counselors to kids that Vicki and Jackson offer is second to none. There's a lot of camps that you're, if you have 30 kids, there might be two counselors there, but we have one to five at a minimum, and usually one to three if we don't have everybody show up that day. So the quality is definitely there.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Okay, just a special thanks on my part to all of our directors, our department heads. We've accomplished just great things with Park and Rec, and thank you, Bryce. And Nathan, your leadership in the admin and finance area is excellent, and your leadership the past couple of weeks has been superb, so thank you. Bill, we survived another big storm, or two, and whoever thought it would be the second worst one in the history that you remember, thanks to you and your staff. And Jeff?
Thanks to staff, not he. I'm a liability, as Nathan says.
Well, don't tell anybody. And Chief, a special thanks to you. I know how difficult the past two weeks have been, and you've been there for your officers and for the community, and we are here for you in the weeks ahead. So thank you. All right, we'll move on to the monthly reports of the special committees. Tree Board, Nathan, Bill? Have you drawn straws? Which one's going to answer?
Yeah. We actually did meet. We discussed several topics. We are still not able to get with Prairie Village to see how their full-time Arbors monitors private trees. We did discuss the fine and fee structure for trees damaged by contractors, and the Tree Board was not in favor of changing the current structure to keep the price point the same and not be able to change the price point. What else did we discuss?
The recommended tree list?
The recommended tree list with input from Kim Baumberger was finalized, so that'll be going up on the website, or is it already? It's already up on the website. Rick works pretty fast. I think that was about it. Oh, and we, and I forgot to send you the language on approved removal of sweet gums at homeowner expense without having to pay into the tree fund.
Are you dancing a jig over there, Jason? Sweet gums?
Just need the revenue to come in. Take it home.
Well, that you have to take care of.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
One comment question.
Sure, Jenna?
And I emailed you guys about it and you responded, but just, I met with a resident, and she, the point that she was raising was somebody, she moved into a house and prior to it being built, and somebody had, the tree had been damaged by the contractor, and then it became her tree, and it was in the right-of-way. Part of the issue was, like, knowing which is a right-of-way tree, and I don't know if that comes up in your Tree Board meetings, but, and I know we put it in focus on Fairway, but other ways that we can let folks know. And then she was saying, kind of, I think her point was the incentive, it's kind of stinky for someone to say it any other way, for somebody to move into a house and think that it's going to be a right-of-way tree and then not realize that it is. So just some things we can be thinking about policy-wise and notification-wise.
The problem, Jenna, is that it's no longer a city tree, so it's not our responsibility to notify them. It's either the contractor, if it's a direct sale, or the new, the previous homeowner has to tell the new homeowner.
Yeah, I don't know that that's happening, and we're not mandating that to happen, so I wonder if we can play a role in somehow letting people know what are right-of-way trees, if they expect it to be, it's within X feet from the curb. I don't know, maybe there's something more we can be doing.
We do put that information in the focus on Fairway. It's on the website of what, you know, our right-of-way is and what is within that.
But that, it wouldn't be in the focus on Fairway, right? Because it would say the right-of-way trees are between this and this, and if you look and you're like, oh, my tree's made it, I don't know that the contractor damaged it, it still looks like a big tree to me.
What would you suggest we do?
I don't have a solution. I'm just proposing it to, for the good of the group.
We have actually discussed that at the Tree Board, because it has come up before, and it is, it is a private contractual disclosure matter. So whoever the owner is, whether it be a builder or a homeowner, in, when they do their homeowner disclosure, they are technically required to pass that on and put that in their disclosure and notify whoever their buyer is, just like they would give a disclosure on the sump pump never works, or this doesn't work in the house. It's just part of the homeowner disclosure, and if the homeowner doesn't do it, disclose that, then the buyer has a cause of action, if they want to, against the seller for lack of full disclosure.
So what is the, what's the governing law that would say the homeowner has to put that in the disclosures?
It'd be Kansas State law.
Kansas State law, it's a fact.
And I'd want to go and look at that language, but, I mean, I just went through a real estate contract. I think it's the way you read it, whether or not you would choose to put that in there. It mainly centers around more, you know, deficiencies within the house or the mechanicals. And somebody asked, do you have a suggestion? I do have a suggestion. Why don't we just have a map that shows the right-of-way trees, shows which trees have been purchased out? I mean, it's not like we're adding hundreds and hundreds of right-of-way trees a year.
We maintain a detailed Excel spreadsheet of location, size of tree, whether the tree's still standing, whether the tree's still removed.
So could that be put on the website somewhere?
I'm sure it could.
I like that a lot.
Kelly Buzek, Ward 1. Nathan, can I ask a question? Do we, when does the City of Fairway know when we have new residents who just moved into the city?
The only way we find out is periodically, I think it's once a quarter, we receive essentially a download from the county that we put into our system, and then that updates the owners that are there. So there's, I mean, we don't, it's an automatic thing, so it doesn't come with a, here are the new owners. It's just a data dump that goes in and updates information from the county.
If we were to cross-reference that with Bill's list, if, if, say, we just maybe started, like, welcome to Fairway, and if they don't have a right-of-way tree, or they do have right-of-way trees, just so you know, this is, these are the ordinances, and just welcome, we just want to let you know that we're here to help, but if they're not, they should have the right to know that.
Is the dump, it's not just new owners, though. It's, is it the whole?
It goes through, updates everything.
Everything.
So we, you essentially would have to ask staff to cross-check two lists of 1,800 homes on a quarterly basis to see which ones have changed and which ones haven't, because we don't get a, here are the new people. It's, here's all of the information on ownership of the county.
Okay, okay. I see what you're saying. Okay, not new residents at all, just?
It would be, we, somebody would have to review every 1,800 homes. And to that point, it's, the transaction would have already occurred. So we're getting this information, it could be six months old by the time we're actually getting it and downloading it into our system.
However, though, if, even with that said, if their road trees are no longer owned by the city, I think they have a right to know that. And I know if we, if we can just help in that situation, because then it's, then it'll, then it'll decrease our administration costs with people calling up the city and saying, hey, this is going on, and you can turn around and say, well, I'm sorry, but that's your tree now, and this is from the previous owner. If we could do something that could connect the two, to make it easier for new residents, old residents, what have you, because it just keeps coming up all the time, unfortunately.
Well, so I, I think putting the Excel spreadsheet online is, that's something that's easy to do. We're not updating that list a whole lot. I think we can certainly add that to it. The only thing I would say, though, is I, well, I think that's good information to have online for a new homeowner who's coming from out of town, out of state, wherever. They're not likely going to think, I need to go to the city's website and see if there's a tree on the list.
Correct, you're right.
So, you know, and, you know, the other thing to consider here is, I don't know of any other city that treats its right-of-way trees the same way that we do. So, you know, whether, if you live in Roland Park, or Shawnee, or Overland Park, I think the expectation that the city's going to come and trim your right-of-way tree every three years doesn't exist, because the service doesn't exist. So it's already a very unique thing for the City of Fairway that we're providing that service to the level that we do. And so I think, certainly, we get calls from realtors all the time with an address, and they're asking if there are any outstanding permits or anything like that. We can, if, you know, if we can refer them to a website where there's a link about, well, you might want to check this list, or even if we check it for them while we're on the phone with them, we can do that. But again, that requires the realtor or the resident, the potential resident, to go out and do that proactive work, which unfortunately, a lot of times, doesn't happen. But, but it's certainly, from our perspective, we can, we can make it available online and the information's there.
And maybe, maybe what would work is, we put it online, and then eventually, we hope, new owner, new homeowners will see that newsletter, and we can have, Rick, you can add it to your constant reminders, go to the website, check on the right-of-way trees, and then hopefully they'll read it. Oh, that's one of mine. I don't know, I don't know how else we could do that.
I think the more we can do, do we, do we still have a section on the website that's like, mute of Fairway? I can't remember what it's called. Anyways, if we had that section, that's a good place to put it, too, but I think this is certainly going to be helpful, and it doesn't seem so burdensome, since the data already exists.
And also less hassle in the long run, so no one, we don't have to deal with it, they'll already know what the situation already is.
As long as they read the newsletter.
As long as they read the newsletter.
There's that caveat.
You all listening out there, read the newsletter.
We can all keep hoping. Okay.
Two questions, real quick.
Yes.
So is that list just of the ones that have been purchased, or do you keep a log of all the trees and then flag the ones that have been purchased, or both?
That's just the ones that have had tree violations.
Okay. And then, I didn't see the minutes from the Tree Board, but I was just curious on the discussion around the flexibility of the governing body to have any discretion around either the fee or the?
Bill addressed that. Did you have a question on it?
Yeah, just in either discussion around it, it just was, it said, he said it was discussed and opted not to move forward.
David, do you want to?
We did discuss it, and we opted to leave, leave the policy as is. The, the appeal is not with the amount of the fine, but did the, what do we call it? The tree manager? Did the manager properly apply the statute and determine it was a violation? What we discussed was the impracticality of doing an exception at the city council level. Once we grant one exception to the fine, we've essentially written the ordinance out of the statute. Every time there is a violation, the homeowner will be in there saying, well, wait a minute, you reduced that neighbor's fine, I want my fine reduced. So the issue really is, do we have the ordinance, or do we not? It's an all, it's one of our all-or-nothing statutes. There is no discretion on the amount of the fine, otherwise it becomes completely unworkable. Every homeowner will appeal their fine.
See, I just don't see the situation, though, where they come before us and we think you, you know, administrated it incorrectly. I mean, the last guy that was here before us thought it was a discussion on the fine. So somewhere there's a breakdown on the expectations of what's going to happen at the city council meeting, that, that's what needs to be fixed.
Well, that, that would be Bill's staff's responsibility to say to the contractor, you can appeal my decision.
We always state that you can appeal the decision, not the fine.
Yeah. Appeal the decision. Why don't you go, do you go on and say, and not the fine?
I don't know that I've ever.
Maybe you need to add that.
Certainly can. And I think then we need to add, what you're appealing in the decision is not that you can make a case. It's, I mean, if I heard that, I would think I could come make a case of reasonableness to try to appeal to the governing body, but we don't have the ability to make a reasonable case determination based on this rule.
Not of the fine?
Or of the decision. If it was improperly imposed, not if it was.
Yeah, we do.
No, the discretion we had last time, we were told, was, was this properly applied or not? And the answer was absolutely yes, by the rule, but not necessarily from a discretion standpoint, but we didn't have the ability to make a discretionary call, was my understanding of the legal.
Sure, and that's by design, frankly. It gets, it would be very, I'll use the word uncomfortable, to have a resident up here, you know, pick any one of your neighbors, is up here appealing to your heartstrings about their tree fine because their contractor violated the ordinance. And now you're, now the council's in a decision-making place where they have to decide, do we lower this person's fine because we, they're our next-door neighbor, or because they're part of our bridge club, or whatever the case may be? The idea was to make sure that those kinds of subjective injections couldn't be made into the ordinance. So that was part of, partly by design for that. The other piece to that is, is that we don't, it carries across our other code, the rest of the code as well. We don't, we want to be in a situation where we can say that we are consistent and fair in the delivery of every ordinance that we have out there. And I think it was, it was either quotes from Rich, or even back to Steve Chen, that you had at the meeting, where it's, where, you know, our legal counsel is saying, look, if you deviate from this, you have the risk of appearing to be arbitrary and capricious in the execution of this ordinance, which then, of course, would open up the door for a legal dispute with the city. So I think, you know, the entire purpose of the ordinance was meant to be a deterrent to damaging or violating the tree protection ordinance. And so with that, the ordinance was passed intentionally with a very, I'll say, harsh penalty to prevent the removal and damage to right-of-way trees at the request of residents at the time where we were seeing a lot of damage, preventative damage occurring to right-of-way trees because of contractors in the area. So at the end of the day, the ordinance is, is written to be pretty black and white. So, at the end of the day, the ordinance is, is written to be pretty black and white. You know, that being said, I think Bill and his staff does a great job of being judicious in terms of the application. If there is, you know, if there is one piece of lumber sitting in a drip line of a tree, they're not going to race out and say, here's your letter, you're getting fined for this. They are, they are very judicious in how this gets administered because of the fact that they understand that somebody could come up here and, and appeal and say they didn't do this right. So I think from, from that perspective, when Bill and I have a conversation, because he almost always reaches out to me and says, what do you think here, this is the way I'm leaning, there's, the two of us are always consulting before we decide, yes, we're going to move forward with this as a violation, or no, we're not going to move forward, we don't think this is a violation. So it is, you know, but it is something that we look at in terms of the spirit of the code, are we following what the spirit of the code is? And so it is, by the time something would get here to the council on appeal, staff is very confident, has a high degree of confidence that a violation has occurred and it should be addressed as the code says.
And I would agree with that, I just, I do not think that the individual that was here last month, one, knew that he couldn't appeal the fine, and two, had any idea that we had no ability to overturn this unless we absolutely thought that the decision was in error.
Well, actually, they did, that was John Moffett, and right across the street, they had a violation not more than a year or two ago, and...
That was Chris George that was here last month. Yeah, it was his first time.
Okay, I thought it was Moffett.
I just think that, I'm, I'm with Dan, and that the explanation needs to be, you cannot appeal the fine amount before they come here, and that unless you think we are wrong in our interpretation, the governing body does not have the ability to overturn that, because we would have to say, we disagree with Bill or his team, that he applied this incorrectly, that's the only option we have.
We can work on, on some modifications to make sure it is clear in there, so that going forward, they understand that they are appealing the decision and not the fine.
I, and I don't have any problem with the ordinance, I think that you're applying it correctly, and I also don't have any problem with tough conversations, but it would be my preference that the decision goes to you to make sure it was applied or not applied correctly. I mean, I really just think it's going to be 100 residents in a row that were all saying, yep, it's applied correctly, we're making them come to a meeting, we're making them pay the money, it, it just seems redundant to, something you could probably take care of.
That, that falls back to all of chapter 13, or whatever the right-of-way chapter is, that any decision of the right-of-way director can be appealed to the governing body, and that's what that is tailored off of and dovetails into, which is why you're seeing it at this level.
From that point, if they disagree with the governing body, it also says that then they can go take it to district court.
Yep.
So, and that is, there's, there's also, it's just like in chapter 15, if it's a dis, if it's a, if they disagree with an interpretation from the building or code official, then they can appeal that to the BZA. So it's meant to be that that appeal gets in front of a body and not just one person. So I think, and I think from a practice standpoint, that's a good practice, I think if we make, if we can ensure that the letter is clearly indicating, if you have to appeal the decision, not the fine, and the fine only goes away if the appeal is, is granted, but here's the criteria for the appeal to be granted, I think with, less wordy than what I just said, we can put that on paper so that it's clear for the next person that gets a letter.
Kelly, music award one. When we were in the tree committee meeting the other day, Nathan had mentioned, and it's one thing we forget a lot about, we're the city of trees, and that fine, those monies go back into the, the Fairway budget, which we've spent how much a year on our trees?
Around $150,000 a year.
That's a huge investment that we're trying to sustain and, and keep, keep safe our trees. And I, I totally agree, but like you said, the, the language does need to be more specific, but again, coming right back to it is, we are the city of trees, thank you.
And, and to be, to be fair, the fine is, you could call it harsh, yet it doesn't recoup, the city, doesn't come close to recouping the city's investment in an individual tree. So if we were truly trying to recoup our investment, the fine wouldn't be $100 a caliper inch, it'd be, what, $1,000 a caliper inch?
Well, that's what I was going to state, if you think the fine is harsh now, what about 10 years ago when it was enacted? The fine hasn't gone up at all.
Right. So I, and I, and, and on your discretion, what, we as a governing body do have the discretion to conclude that the tree manager applied the ordinance incorrectly. We do have, that is our job, we're in appellate court, so to speak, and we can say, we think you did not apply this correctly, and if that's the case, then the decision of the tree manager is overridden and there's no fine. So we do have, that's, that's our role, just like it would be the role of the BZA, and what else do we get? We get stuff from the plan, you know, things, planning commission.
I, I think the difference is, I mean, as a builder, planning commission can make all signs, all kinds of discretionary calls, right? And we can't make a discretionary call. We can only make a, we think you're wrong, Bill, or whoever, that's the only call we can make, whereas you can appeal anything, driveway loca, well, that's a bad example, that's to come here, but green space requirements, pools, those are all discretionary items that the planning commission can change based on their judgment, where this is non-judgmental, it is all or none.
It's de novo review, we're not doing...
It, it is, but that's, but, but that was the intent of the, that is the intent of the ordinance, and so if that is no longer acceptable to the governing body, then our, our choice is to basically get rid of the ordinance and not have the tree protection ordinance anymore. And I would say personally, I don't think that's a good option. Because again, if you build in discretion, every decision of the tree manager will be appealed, every single one. And if we grant one, we've essentially eliminated the ordinance, because every neighbor, every homeowner will say, you granted theirs, my case is no different, and now we as a governing body are trying to split hairs on that. And I, I just, I think that's going to open up a can of worms that we shouldn't open, and, and I think it's a reasonable balance between protecting our trees, and I do like the idea of it, you know, having something on the website that someone could look at so we could say, you had the opportunity to educate yourself. We will have some ob, obviously an obligation to keep that accurate, because we don't want to expose ourselves to liability for having an inaccurate list on our website, where they can say, well, you didn't have my tree on there, or you didn't accurately explain the ordinance on there. But there is some burden on the homeowner and the residents to know the law. I mean, that's the burden on all of us, you know, we are charged with knowledge of the law.
And John Allen, we do use discretion whenever we levy the, the penalty. Case in point, Chris George, last week, or whatever it was, had tree fencing falling down and some, I don't know, six or seven two-by-fours in the protected area of a house, and of all people, I would think he would understand what the protected area of a tree fencing is, and still had this occur. Did we levy a tree fine? No, what we did is told him, hey, you have till the end of the day to get your tree fencing up, and the two-by-four is out of there before it is a tree fine. So we do use a lot of discretion before it ever gets to that point.
That's fair. I think my question's been answered.
And I'm sorry for confusion, like, Chris George with Mojo, but...
No, this was a very good discussion.
It is good discussion, because I'm still, while I actually agree with it, I, I no longer disagree with the fact that we don't have discretion, I do think it's interesting that we can choose driveway locations in discretion and not have to follow the right-of-way, you know?
But we don't have an investment in the driveway, we have an investment in the trees, and that's why the ordinance reads differently.
But what, what we talked about at the last meeting was, it would be nice, and we're not solving it in this meeting, but it would be nice if there was some sort of discretion i- in the middle of, hey, you now own this tree, you can just cut that tree down. That seems absurd, I'd rather the $5,500 go to trying to save the tree versus just, it's 100% one way or 100% the other way.
Yeah, I'm kind of with, oh, sorry, may I?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, just as a policy matter, if our goal is to save the trees, by finding people, by finding a builder $5,000, that's not ultimately going to save the tree. So I think there needs to be some kind of potential relook at, what are, what is our goal here?
But what it does, the, pardon?
But, but is it?
It is. Yes. Oh, I could tell you, Caningsdorf got the message.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I just worry about in the long term, all these trees that, again, are not going to be maintained, but they don't have to be, they're no longer city trees, and the next person can just come in and take them down, and how does that help us as a community, as the city of trees?
Okay, but if you take that $5,500 and, and to, to care for that tree, I bet you're going to be spending a lot more than the $5,500, and then that's going to be the city spending more money on a tree that a contractor or a homeowner damaged.
Well, and I would, I guess a couple of things here, one, I would say, we, we, we crafted this ordinance in concert with Kim Bonberger from the Kansas Forestry Division, and we looked at, okay, when you look at the types of damage that was occurring under these trees, or on the drip line, under the drip lines of these trees, what is the probability that the tree is going to suffer irreparable harm and/or die in the next three, five, seven years? And so when we looked at that, that was the basis for, okay, the expectation now is that this tree is, it is probable that this tree is going to become unhealthy and/or die in the next number of years. And so that's why we levied the fine the way we did, because the tree is likely going to fall off of our inventory anyway, because of what happened to the tree. And in this, so this is kind of where it gets frustrating for staff, and, and maybe I, I should have explained this beforehand, but particularly for the contractors, they come in, they apply for their permit, they have to check a box that says, yes, I am familiar with the right, with the public tree protection ordinance, and staff will hand them the ordinance directly if not. We don't hand them any other ordinances, but we hand them the tree protection ordinance, so that they have it in their hands. They know that they cannot bring any equipment on site or start construction, demolition, or anything until they have had a one-on-one meeting with Rick, our right-of-way specialist. When Rick goes out there and meets with them, they jointly work on what is the protection area of the tree. Rick takes measurements, he takes photos, and then he takes it a step further and says, if you violate the ordinance, this will be the fine for this tree. This happens way before the contractor brings a single piece of equipment onto the site. So what happens then is you have a contractor, and I'm not just picking on the last one that was here, this is 99% of the contractor violations we've had to deal with, is that there's a lack of project management in terms of the subcontractors. It's not going to be a Caleb George employee that's going to dump something underneath the right-of-way tree, they've told their employees, don't do this, otherwise this is the fine. It's all of the subcontractors that come in and do the work. So it's a matter of, and, and you mentioned Caningsdorf, he had to go through this process, and it was painful for him, but I think even Chris helped him come up with a checklist of all the things that he should be doing with his subs, to ensure that his subs aren't violating the tree protection ordinance. So the burden is on the contractor. Whoever comes in and pulls that permit, we have literally spoon-fed them every piece of information they need to avoid violating the public tree protection ordinance. If they choose not to take that information and give it to their subs, then that's on them, and they can deal with that between the contractor and their sub. But then for them to come back and ask the city council to reduce the fine because they failed to properly educate and inform their subcontractors is crazy to me, that, that we're sitting here having this conversation, because unfortunately, in, in many situations, the, the general does not inform, control, whatever, their subcontractors, and that's not on us, and that shouldn't be something that the city council then should be considering lessening the fine. If we, we look at the tree violations that occur in Fairway, a vast majority have to do with contractors, very few have to deal with individual residents who do something to their own tree. We, as a city, publish more articles about our trees in Fairway than any other city in Johnson County, I guarantee it, probably times 10. So we have been educating our residents, many of them do call in with questions about right-of-way trees, but most of the time, when you get someone appealing this ordinance before you, it's a contractor who had a subcontractor who did something on a, on a piece of property. So I think there, I literally cannot, unless we were going to have Rick go stand on site at the construction site, there's no, nothing else that we can do as a city to educate the contractors on what not to do for the tree protection ordinance.
And it has a big orange fence around it.
There is that.
Right?
Yes.
Well, and that...
So...
And some of them have signs on the big orange fence around the tree.
And that was, the, the orange fences was...
We can't, we can't fix stupidity.
Was, was part of the crafting the ordinance of, how far out do we go? And that was a discussion and a negotiation. I think Kim Bonberger, or I think you said, thought it should be much farther out than, but we compromised back in and brought it into 75% versus 100 or more percent, so...
The one thing we have always stressed is be reasonable, and, and that's all we can, we try and be reasonable with the contractor, we understand they have a job to do, we do not want to handcuff someone, because alls they're going to do is end up violating the tree ordinance anyway. We try and be reasonable, and I don't know another way to stress that.
And I do want to, I got my Mojo and Chris, I got my Mojo, my Mojo was off there, sorry, because Mojo, John Moffett was in on the driveway right-of-way tree on Sunrise, but literally right across the street on a new house, they came in and, and appealed a tree violation ordinance, and to staff's credit, they had visually documented all of the prior violations that they said, don't do this again, and they didn't find them, they didn't say you're in violation, and it was about the fifth or sixth time where finally, with all that junk in the porta-pot in the, in the orange zone, so to speak, finally staff had no choice but to find them. And then they came in and tried to appeal it, and saying, we love trees, gosh, we love trees. Okay, well, why did you ignore staff five times before we finally said you violated the order? So I, I do know staff tries their best to A, educate, and B, be flexible. So yes, if it's just a two-by-four, it's, hey, you got to clean that up, but if it's, what was that, a yard or ton of cement that weighed 4,000 pounds?
Yard of concrete.
That, that, that's a little different.
And I want to be clear, I think you guys do a great job with it. I mean, I, I just want that to be 100% clear.
This, this was a, a, a very good discussion, worth the time, because I know you get a lot of questions, staff gets a lot of questions about right-of-way trees, that's probably one of the most frequently asked subjects. And so now, we've all been educated. Until the next time. All right, let's move on. Public comment for consent agenda items only. Those consent agenda items are A, approved minutes of the previous regular city council meeting, and B, approved claims and appropriations, ordinance number 1787, July 2023. I don't see anyone in the audience on my screen.
If there's anyone participating via Zoom that wants to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature now.
Nope. Okay, we'll close public comment on the consent agenda items. These items are determined to be routine enough to be acted on in a single motion, however, this does not preclude discussion. If a council member requests, an item may be removed from the consent agenda for further consideration and separate motion. Anyone want to remove either of these items? Is there a motion then?
I'm moved to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda items A and B. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. New business. Item A is a proclamation for Public Works. Bill, will you introduce our guest, please?
Absolutely, I'd love to. Starting from the left, we have Rick Allen, our right-of-way specialist. In the center is Chris Mann, the Assistant Director of Public Works. Next to him is Jeff Seifert with Casey Arbist and his wife, and I apologize, I can't remember your name, Claire, his wife Claire.
This is meant for all of you, in addition to John and... This is meant for all of you, in addition to John and Chuck, who could not be here this evening. It is our way of saying thank you for your diligence, and what I know was really, really hard work, because when I drove the city, the Monday after the storm, I think is when it was, I, I saw the work that was going on, and it, it, it wasn't just one day. A Day of Gratitude for Public Works Staff. Whereas the resilience and dedication of our community's public works staff have been exemplified during the recent and challenging storm events that swept through our region. And whereas the relentless commitment, unwavering teamwork, and tireless efforts of our Public Works personnel with assistance from Casey Arbist have played an integral role in ensuring the safety, well-being, and swift recovery of our community. And whereas the exceptional professionalism and expertise demonstrated by our Public Works teams have been vital in mitigating the impact of these storm events on our infrastructure, public spaces, and the overall quality of life for our residents. And whereas the selfless actions of these unsung heroes have provided us all with a profound sense of security and hope, showcasing the true spirit of public service and community unity. And whereas the dedication and hard work of our Public Works staff have not only restored our roads and essential services, but also reaffirmed our collective belief in the strength and resilience of our community. And whereas their efforts, often in challenging and adverse conditions, have been remarkable and deserve our heartfelt gratitude and recognition. Now therefore, I, Melanie Heppely, Mayor, on behalf of the City of Fairway, do hereby proclaim a Day of Gratitude for Public Works Staff. I hereby declare August twenty-first as a day dedicated to honoring and expressing our deepest appreciation for the essential service, sacrifice, and hard work of our Public Works staff during the recent storm events. We acknowledge their unwavering dedication, commitment to duty, and relentless, relentless efforts in safeguarding our community and upholding the values that define us. We encourage all residences, all residents, businesses, and community members to join in recognizing the remarkable contributions of our Public Works team. Let us take this opportunity to express our gratitude, extend a helping hand, and reflect upon the spirit of resilience that binds us together as a community. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Fairway, Kansas, to be affixed this twenty-first day of August twenty-twenty-three. Thank you all very much. Bill, if you'll please pass this on to John and Chuck. Thank you. Okay, item B, Consider Agreement with ETC Institute for a Citizen Satisfaction Survey. Nathan?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So we talked about this for a couple of Administration and Finance Committee meetings, initially talking about conducting a survey in twenty-twenty-four. However, as a result of those conversations regarding our capital improvement priorities and the, all the projects we have coming up, we proposed moving the survey to this fall. So there is a, there are two numbers in here, and I didn't get a chance to hear back from them, ETC, today, but I can tell you, this is the same cost that we had for the twenty-nineteen survey. I would ask that the council consider approving this for an amount of not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
All right, I open the floor for council discussion or questions of Nathan?
Two questions.
Yes, Jenna.
The two guys, is it the nine thousand or the ten thousand?
Yeah, it should be the ten thousand. I, I, I-
That's great.
Because it's in the chart, I'm guessing it's the ten thousand, but I've asked for clarity on that. I just, I haven't had a chance to hear back.
Okay, and then my other question was, the sample of two hundred surveys, if my math is correct, is like eleven percent of our households? And is that a meaningful, like, it seems low to me, but I, I don't do surveys.
It is the same threshold that we used for the twenty-twenty, for the twenty-nineteen survey.
And our population is slightly more, but not that great.
I just didn't know if there's, I'm sure they're pulling that from something, but there's something to, it just didn't seem like that, that high.
I think it's ten percent is, is what they strive for. Yeah.
Let's get otherwise.
Okay, David?
You recall how, we had, I'd asked Nathan her, her time, but they're not going to have to get the call. We had way more than that turned in last time, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we ended up with like a little over three hundred.
Yeah.
So that came back, yeah. So when, they'll send out paper versions and they'll do the, for the phone calls, and then they get more aggressive in terms of reaching out until they get to the threshold that they need. But I, they, again, we had more than what we had here last year, or in twenty-nineteen.
Yeah, our residents like to participate in this survey. That's been my experience. Yeah, Dan?
Well, and I think Jenna raises a good point. I mean, how, how many residents do we have?
Eighteen hundred homes, so four thousand residents.
And anyone in that household would be able to, spouses, for example, would both be able to fill the survey out?
They can work on, yeah, it's one return per, per address.
One return per household.
And they have to be, I think they have to be over eighteen to participate.
I think so, too.
Okay.
I think that's what it was.
Might think at a minimum, it would just be worth asking them if they could up, up that number.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, I'll open it to public comment concerning our citizen satisfactory, citizen satisfaction survey. Is there anyone who would like to comment?
Mayor, it's only Barb. It's our, not, I didn't mean that.
Hi Barb.
Hi Barb.
Hi Barb.
It's only our minute taker who's online with us. We don't have anybody else from the public.
We will close-
Sorry, Barb.
Public comment for item B.
It's terrible.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item B on the new business agenda, the agreement with the ETC Institute to conduct a citizen satisfaction survey in twenty-twenty-three for a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agreement with ETC not to exceed ten thousand dollars. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Item C under new business, consider, consider interlocal agreement between the City of Mission, the City of Fairway, and the City of Roland Park for the design and construction of a joint project which will consist of mill and overlay, spot curb repair, sidewalk and striping of Roe between Sixty-third Street and Johnson Drive. Bill?
Thanks, Mayor. Before, the governing body for consideration is an interlocal agreement, similar to the one that we did for Fifty-third Street this year and Fifty-third Street last year, multiple cities. And this more so covers the design portion, well, includes the design portion, which the cars in local agreement, which we get for our funding, does not cover. This is a, actually, four-city project. Prairie Village is declining any funding on it because they do not want to take away from whatever their project is, their other project is next year. This is different than the, when we did this in two thousand nine. In two thousand nine, it was just Fairway and Mission. They've added Roland Park into this to, to bring that boundary north and include some intersection work there in Johnson Drive and Roe, which doesn't have anything to do with us, but I think they're looking at replacing those signals and doing some different configuration, carrying our sidewalk up on the east side of the road up towards Johnson Drive, so continuing it where it dead ends at Fifty-Ninth Street right now. But these are all engineers' estimates for construction, since we obviously haven't bid the project yet, and that we won't tell, you know, spring of next year, probably.
Okay. Any questions or discussion concerning this interlocal agreement?
Bill, this is the project, this will be done in the summer when the school's not in session?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that will be the goal.
All right, public comment on this subject. Any change in audience?
Yes, Barb.
Hi Barb. Okay, we will close public comment on this item, and I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I, I move that we approve item C on the new business agenda, the interlocal agreement between the City of Mission, the City of Fairway, and the City of Roland Park for the design and construction of the sixty, of the Roe project between Sixty-third Street and Johnson Drive.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the interlocal agreement with the three cities of Mission, Fairway, and Roland Park for the work between Sixty-third Street and Johnson Drive on Roe. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Okay, I would like to add a couple items to the new business part of the agenda. The first item concerns the memory of Officer Oswald. As we all know, answering the call has provided us with a means of making donations, a hundred percent of which will go to his family for their support. And I would like to recommend that the City of Fairway donate twenty-five thousand dollars to that answering the call. That's not an item that we will vote on, but it's an item that requires consensus of the council. So as you're thinking about this, is everyone in agreement with that amount? I see consensus. Nathan will do that. Thank you all very much. And the final item I'd like to add to new business concerns the cost for the storm-related brush collection from the two storms that we had, and the tree damage, tree damage removal costs, the hanging trees, the only thing, the hang, tree hangers, the only thing that we haven't done yet is remove the ten to thirteen trees, right?
They're starting this week.
Are they starting this week? Okay, so we'll have that.
I know at least one is down from going and looking at something else. I haven't checked all of them yet.
Okay. Nathan's going to provide us with a summary of what those costs are to date. That will come out of the contingency part of our budget, and you'll find that in the admin budget. I did declare an local emergency declaration with the first storm. The reason for doing that, number one, the damage was significant, and it, declaring that, which Fairway does not do very often, was definitely called for in light of, of the destruction that did take place across our city. But the other reason is for the hope of maybe getting some FEMA money to help us with that cost. So Nathan, you want to do a summary of what it's, you estimate it's going to be?
Sure. I'm just going to give you the big total numbers on the, on the removal, on the tree work. So as, as we talked about earlier today, it was not just the immediate come in and open up the streets the night of the storm. It was coming in the next day and getting tree limbs and trees off vehicles and, and other-
Houses.
Houses, although I don't know that we removed a lot out of, off of houses. Yeah. Ours is more along the lines of making sure the roads were truly passable, open curb to curb. And then you have the work of coming in afterward, where, after the residents have been given the time to get their, their limbs to the curb and, and cut and all that good stuff, then you move on to the, okay, now we need to identify all the stuff that broke, but it's still up in the trees. All of that needs to come down. Then you need to look at, okay, what else is up there in the trees that we don't know about? And so this was a, a conversation that I'd had with the mayor and with Councilman Watkins in his role as council president. Through the declaration, the emergency declaration, the mayor had some decisions to make in terms of, you know, how far do we go to make sure we're protecting the, the canopy of our urban forest here in Fairway. All told, we, right now, we're anticipating in external costs, we're going to be somewhere between a hundred and sixty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then when you look at internal time costs, so this is stuff that's not going to directly affect the budget because, you know, public work staff is already budgeted, although there'd be some overtime fees that would be calculated into there. And then as well as the work the PD did the evening of the storm, that's up to another twenty thousand dollars. So at the high end, we're looking at potentially about two hundred thousand dollars that the city will, will spend on this storm. As the mayor said, we did the declaration of, of a local emergency. There is debate about whether or not that is technically required in order to get FEMA money, but it's, we, we did it as a precaution in the event that a declaration was made. In the county, there is a threshold of two-point-seven million dollars that needs to be spent collectively by public agencies, public jurisdictions, in order for FEMA, in order for the state to consider a declaration and, and getting FEMA involved and that sort of thing. Unfortunately, not all cities responded in the same manner when it came to the storm aftermath. So most cities in the county did provide a curbside collection, but not all, notably some of the larger cities did not. So with that, the collective amount spent by the municipalities, as reported to the Johnson County Emergency Management Office, was about a half a million dollars short of that two-point-seven million dollar mark. In Kansas, I, and I could be a little bit off on this, but it's my understanding, the Kansas threshold is about five million dollars. It's my understanding that that threshold would have been met, but for Johnson County, we did not meet the threshold of two-point-seven million. So there will not be a disaster, disaster declaration sought. And so all of that two hundred thousand dollars that we have spent cleaning up from the storms will be a cost that we will absorb internally. As you all know with the budget, we budget this year for twenty-twenty-three, we have a contingency line item of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that does not cover the entire cost of the storm. In addition, there was some other expenses that have come out of, and I guess these would be the first ones coming out of contingency for twenty-twenty-three. And so, you know, we're going to hope for a real mild winter, although the former Zomnax would tend to tell you, don't.
Don't count on that?
Yeah, don't count on that. So right now, from a, from a finance perspective, I am not planning on making any transfers at this time from our, our general fund reserve to cover the costs. Right now, when these bills come in for the tree work, they're all going to get coded to the contingency line item, so that line item's going to go in the red really quick. But that way, we'll be able to monitor what's going on with that fund. And then we, as we get closer to the end of twenty-twenty-three, if it looks as though we're going to exceed our budgetary threshold, which I don't anticipate we would, unless something else happens, then we will just sort of end the year with probably a smaller transfer from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. So when we're at the next Administration of Finance Committee and you see that number down in the bottom left corner, just, just know that that, as these bills come due and we pay them, that number is going to get a lot smaller. So is that what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yep.
Any questions for Nathan? Okay, we will move on to governing body comment. During this time, members of the governing body will be given the opportunity to speak about matters related to the city. No formal action will be taken during this time. Does anyone have an item they'd like to discuss or comment on?
I do.
Jason?
So I spoke to most of council and made, so that, the, the T-shirts for Officer Oswald, I've got the, kind of what the front is going to look like. We should have something on a T-shirt as a proof for you to approve, Chief, probably in the next day or so. And then we're still on schedule for production, from what I understand. So that should be happening about a, well, today's, what is today? Monday, right? In about a week-ish. So we could be ready to rock and roll and start selling, and then obviously, you know, making, you know, donations to, to that fund. Nathan, I want to kind of chat with you about, I don't know, getting the word out, if you will. So, and then obviously, Chief, I'll let you know what the scoop is. But if you got, I've got it on my phone. If you guys want to see it, I can just let me know.
Okay.
Cool. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, did you get the little red book, the red-
No.
Around for- Mayor, did you get the little red book, the red envelope around from Rich? I think he, I think he's, I think, not the red, the red one.
There it is.
That wasn't my governing body comment, but I, you know, in your proclamations, you, the word, words, resiliency and community came up several times, and I don't think we can say it enough publicly and privately to not just you, Chief, and Officer Bayless, but to all of our staff and to the neighboring jurisdictions for all the support that we've received these last few weeks. I know I'm thankful to have you as our chief and all of you as our staff. You're a great team.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
I'm going to make a comment. This is sort of, ties in with, with Jason's efforts. About the same time after Jason advised me of his, his project, I thought of a similar project, not to compete, not to compete with anything, but with the intent of finding another way of funding the family. And I thought of tying a contribution with planting of trees would be appropriate. And I didn't fully flesh this out, but I thought the, the intent was make it a win-win-win, win for the family, win for the environment, and win for our Fairway image. And so that was almost two weeks ago, and I pretty well let it, let it rest. Thursday, my wife calls me and she says, I've been in a meeting with some gentlemen who have this idea of mission of planting a million trees. Not necessarily in one spot, but, but she said, given your idea, would you consider talking to these people? And I said, okay. When do they want to meet? And they said, as soon as possible. And I said, that's, that's good because time is of the essence. And I also thought, I probably should invite Nathan, and he agreed. So we met in our conference room last Friday with this group, whose mission, as I said, was to plant a lot of trees, and my intent was to tie trees into giving. And so we talked about a number of things of where they would go. Nathan discussed the tree project, our, our tree board, which was very apropos to tonight's meeting, and they were impressed with how forward we are with that, with that process. And so then we got talking about, well, how are we going to put this thing together and make it a collaboration of our intent and of what their mission is? And so after a lot of discussion, they agreed, and by the way, there were four men there, and they were architects, problem solvers. So they agreed to come up with a narrative, in other words, how to reach the public, and the logistics, because I'd never considered myself a logistic expert, but knowing very well that that's how you do it. So at the end of the day, I want to make sure that a hundred percent of the donations go to the family, and somewhere we'll have trees. One other point, when getting to where, this is not final, but a possibility was to plant them in Powell Gardens. We could call it a designated area or a grove, which would be all, all donations made in behalf of Oswald. So hopefully, we'll hear from them soon, and that's what I can tell you. Nathan, I don't know if I missed anything?
No, I think you hit the gist of it. Essentially, the city would become an avenue for folks to donate X amount for a tree to be planted. And, and I'm going to not get technical, but, but the folks that we spoke with said they could be applying for carbon credits and would be able to do this at a very low expense, if any expense to them directly. So a hundred percent of whatever dollar amount is decided per tree, we would simply be the vehicle of getting it from the public, recording the number of total trees that were, that are being donated, and then we would pass that on to the fund so that a hundred percent of that donation gets passed through to the fund. And then however many trees are planted out at Powell Gardens and would be planted, and then they would figure out a way to mark or show that this is, this is an area that is dedicated to Officer Oswald. So incredible concept. And so really, you know, they said the best thing that could happen is that this thing goes viral, and we've got people from all over the country willing to donate an amount of money for a tree that, that could, that could become, you know, part of it, you know, its own exhibit essentially out of Powell Gardens, and I think that would just, that would be very powerful for the Oswald family if, if that, if we can make that happen. So still a lot of work to be dealt with in the details. We just have had a conceptual meeting, but I think there was certainly a consensus there on Friday that they want to do everything they can to, to help. So I think that this is a very unique opportunity.
Thank you for your embellishment and thanking for your, your excitement about this project.
Well, and thank you for bringing it to the table. I think it's fantastic.
This is what's great about Fairway. And, and as I said in the vigil on Saturday night, I am so proud of our police department, and I am so proud of Fairway, and this is why. Thank you both. Yeah, Kellyanne?
Kelly Buzek, Ward One. I just, I've got several emails from, from citizens who don't want to reach out to you directly, but want to let you know that they're, they're there, they'll always be there for you, and it doesn't matter what, what day it is, how many years pass, we'll always be there for you, and we want to let you know that. And I'm not taking my blue vermin's down, my blue vermin's are going to stay up for a while, but just let you know that. There's so many people out there that are thinking of you all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open public comment for items not listed on the agenda. We're still.
Yes, Barb.
We're still with Barb. Okay, we'll close public comment, and we are adjourned for the evening.
Need a motion, so move.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Nope, we're done.